Are they on? I might not be able to hear them.
Good morning.
Councilmember Mum, was that you that testified on condo reform?
I think that was somebody else.
I know Jim Frank did, and I thought...
I... I can't hear them anymore. Oh, okay. All right. I'm ready.
Here, I've had much more interaction with them.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to study session. We are going to spend the bulk of our meeting today having a conversation with the Planning Commission and developing a work plan. But I do have a very brief presentation from Tim Sigler for five minutes. And rather than make him sit through our whole thing, I thought it would be good to have him do that and then get back to housing the houseless. So, Tim, if you're there... I don't know.
Council President, this is George Dahl. So, we were planned to discuss after this meeting. So, we've got a couple of other folks that'll be representing this topic.
Okay.
So, if possible, we'd love to do it at 12:00.
Okay. Well, it might... Okay. We'll shoot for that. Thanks, George, for letting me know that. And then we'll...
Yeah, you bet.
We'll jump right into our meeting with the Planning Commission. First of all, it's great to see all you people who volunteer your time and expertise and knowledge to the city to help us work through really some of the most important work that a city does. So, I will turn it over to Todd, I guess, to start over unless it's supposed to be Lewis or some other plan. I'm really most...
I think a little bit.
Okay. Great.
Thank you, Council President. So, greetings, everyone. This is Todd Byrther from the Plan Commission. We are excited for this opportunity to meet with you. And I think even more so than in the past, we have taken a significant time to prepare for this. So, I think we're ready, especially on some of the housing items, to discuss our work plan. But I think to start, we should let Louis perhaps start out with reviewing where we left off in October when we were approving the 2020 work plan.
I will share what's in the pipeline currently. Please feel free to interrupt as I'm going along, or raise your hand so we can recognize you. These are the projects that are currently underway and will be coming before the Plan Commission. And I believe all of these come before council for some type of approval in the end. We have ongoing code development maintenance project. This has been a priority. We went a couple of years without doing a lot of maintenance on the development code. So, we are... We have a package coming through right now, and we will have another package towards the end of the year. The downtown plan is in progress. The draft has been released to the public. We have set up a subcommittee of the Plan Commission that will be deep diving into the policies related to that. We have an upcoming public meeting or two that will share what's in the plan and continue to take public feedback. But we do expect that to be before the Plan Commission per hearing in the first quarter. Typically, what happens after we adopt an updated downtown plan, we take a look at and see what in the development code, what in the capital project lists, and what as far as design guidelines for the design review board, what needs to be updated. And it's yet to be seen what directly out of the plan needs to be updated, but we have a placeholder in here for that. The Housing Action Plan is underway, as you're well aware. That'll be workshopping with Plan Commission and City Council for the next several study sessions in February. We have a placeholder for implementation ideas related around that, and we have to see what exactly is being recommended before we move forward. But we do have a shortlist that I think we want to talk about today. We have a project for updating design guidelines for projects in the shoreline environment. We have a couple of areas where we're kind of lacking in guidance for the Design Review Board, such as for public projects, PUDs and skywalks. And so, we have a project to try to backfill and cover those areas. There's ongoing capital facility chapter update continuation in the Link program. I know you've been briefed on some of the water discussion and upcoming... We'll be doing the same thing for the sewer plan. We are going to be bringing forward studies and capital project updates related to Highway Two, West Plains Transportation Study that WashDOT is the lead on. There's a project website on WashDOT's page for that. The next two are... SRTC is the lead organization, but we're partners with everybody in the region on the U.S. 195-I-90 Study and Division Street Study. And I know we have council members sitting on subcommittees for both of those projects. We have a project underway, and we will be doing a presentation in February to council on Central City Line, now Center Line, TOD overlay discussion. And also, a follow-on project is that is coming up with a planning framework that can be applied in other high-performance transit corridors in the city. That'll be developed with public and staff through that project.
Louis? This is brilliant. Could you explain a little more detail what a TOD overlay plan would look like for Central City Line?
Yeah. Transit-oriented development. So, now that we have these major pieces of infrastructure going in and improved frequency of transit, this would be a package of looking at what are the more pedestrian and bicycle-scale infrastructure that is needed to help people get to those transit stops? And what are some of the land use policies and implementation that we can take a look at to transition and address supporting that level of frequency and investment that the community's put in? So, STA has helped and is supporting our land use plan with their ongoing planning. And this is kind of a backfill on top of that now that they are actually implementing some of those high-performance transit routes. This is to help on the land use side and the rest of the comprehensive plan make that system even better.
Louis, Council President, may I ask a question?
Yep.
As part of this, aren't we also looking at doing an integrated connectivity plan potentially around these nodes? Because having a very well-built infrastructure for walking and biking within a six-block area of these nodes just really boosts the whole system and its functionality. And so, I... At least, I think the intent was for possibly looking at housing types, but also access to the node itself.
Yeah. Within the bike and walk shed of these high-performance, higher-frequency systems, we'll be looking at all the infrastructure related to whatever it takes to help make the best of them. Biking, walking, yep.
But...
Sidewalks.
And just, I guess, when you're talking about land use changes, you're essentially looking at higher-density options. Is that... I mean, that's the thought, right? Okay.
Yeah. It'll be looking at... Some of these routes run within centers and corridors, and some of them run just through neighborhoods. And so, it is looking at the land use. How can we best respond to supporting these high-performance transit systems?
I'll also just chime in. There's commercial opportunities here, too. I've seen those in Denver and Nashville and other communities. So, there... Within a designated center or corridor, there could be some potential land use changes that would benefit businesses as well from mixed use, et cetera.
Right.
That is all in the cards. Yep. We will have... Be talking about this further in February. We have a consultant that is working with us, and they're going to be giving kind of a kickoff presentation for dialogue back and forth between council and Plan Commission, both in February.
All right. Great. Thanks for taking that detour for me. Continue.
In 2021, we also have another round of code cleanup. We have a little larger package of things we'll be bringing forward. These are just clarifying code pieces. We are still polling staff on additional items for the 2021 project. This is a placeholder for a new priority project, undetermined at this point. So, that's really what we want to dialogue with Plan Commission and council today. These are other ongoing mandated kind of annual projects. So, we'll have some... The update to the six-year transportation program, the six-year citywide capital program update. This number, I think, is wrong now. We've had two dropouts. So, we'll have a round of the 2021 comp plan amendments coming forward. I think we were at seven applications and maybe one city application, so we might be at eight. We have the ongoing shoreline master program update that'll be coming forward here and for adoption. And we also are in discussion with the state about a possible floodplain regulation update. We don't really know the scope of that yet or the needed timing for it. We also list here the remaining neighborhood plans that haven't been completed yet. And then, we've got kind of a schedule of major updated items that the state requires coming up. Are there any questions on that? Otherwise, I will punch out of this.
Okay. Hearing no initial questions, I want to... Thank you, Louis. And what I'd like to introduce here is we... If it's the will of the council, we would love to entertain discussing additional work plan items that are on your mind and some that we would like to recommend. I'll start by reporting, you know, in my time on the commission, this is by far... I think my fellow commissioners will agree. This is by far the, you know, the most robust, knowledgeable, and kind of diverse group. So, I really... If you get a unanimous recommendation from us, please know that it was through lengthy deliberation and consensus. And please ask questions and dig deeper on the procedural votes because you'll find, you know, the real meat and potatoes in there. So, please ask those questions. And I say that in the context of we're committed to representing our ideas here horizontally today, and I've asked the commission to hold me accountable also for my own bias when I present. So, Louis, if you please pull up... Is there any other questions or direction from the council before we just briefly introduce a few of these subject areas?
I'm not seeing anything from anyone else, so continue on. And I'm sure you'll spark our comments as we go on.
Yes, please. That's the intent. So, Louis is going to pull up a list here. And I think... Thank you, Louis and staff. I think they've done an excellent job of trying to group these. I mean, I think there's probably a diagram that could go along with this to even pull it back a little more. But what we've done is put these in two main categories. One that are potential... These are mostly focused on housing or maybe exclusively focused on housing. And this commission is very aware and engaged with both the Housing Action Plan, of course, and then the Sustainable Action Subcommittee. You know, and we have representation, particularly Greg and others, that have been involved with many of the stakeholder meetings or actual committee meetings. So, I think it's easiest to zoom out and look at these as actions or code revisions that could happen within the current contours of the comprehensive plan, meaning within the current policies and goals as stated. And then, I think there's a separate category that's a bigger lift, longer lift, but important, you know, context to discuss that aligns more with trends, you know, in other cities, trends that are happening at the legislative level at the state. And, you know, currently, you know, there are... As you... As you... I believe you know, there are many amendments proposed and going through committees right now. And obviously, not all those will make it out of committee or legislature. But I think, you know, the pattern is consistent about what are, you know, both comparable cities, but also cities that are much larger, Seattle, Portland, San Francisco, but also cities that are much smaller than we are, Olympia, Sacramento, and so forth. I think these are all important to talk about. As you know, none of these are silver bullets, and we have to talk about, you know, what the impact is on each one of these levers, what clusters or bundles of them have the most impact, and of course, you know, which are very draining in terms of time and other resources. So, going back up to the ones that are currently either underway or being discussed in some of your subcommittees or, you know, or other actions. Of course, there are... In my mind, I think these can be grouped in actions that were... Have already been taken based off the infill committees and the stakeholder, you know, public outreach that happened in 2019, I think it was, I believe. You know, and out of that came, obviously, just summarizing for everyone, out of that came our pocket residential revisions, our cottage housing, and then last year, some of our amendments to multifamily and high-density, multifamily, particularly in design guidelines, minimum lot sizes, you know, a lot of coverage and so forth like that. And there are, you know, I would consider these are scalpel. You know, these take a lot of consideration and, you know, at detail and to go through and discuss what those impacts could be. There was... There's strong desire to continue on, and staff is... A lot of these, you know, staff is obviously fully qualified to continue driving on these with some input from the commission. The center and corridor planning, there is still interest, both at the large scale to try to complete some of the larger subarea plans, center planning, but also some interest in some of the smaller, you know, either mini centers or some of these, you know, obviously, we talked about the overlay. That would fall in that category. And then, if we go back down to then the bigger list, when we talk about potential look at some of our comprehensive plan, knowing that the periodic update, I believe, doesn't happen for another couple of years to, you know, 2025. But these would be things that we would want to do in advance, either because there is an urgency because of our multiple crises we are experiencing right now, or because it's good timing off-cycle here to dig deep into big subjects, you know, particularly opening up a couple, you know, like we did a year or two ago with considering LU 1.8. Are there other, especially land use policies, particularly 1.3, which is single-family, and LU 1.4? And there are multiple reasons why, and I'll try to represent this very fairly. Those would include, you know, dealing with equity and justice. That's obviously one of the most important ones. But then, the second would be simply looking at, you know, discussing whether or not we are in alignment with current trends that are happening with these policies that are happening at the state level. And there are multiple bills that would start to push us towards these. And I want to remind the council, you know, it was a year or so ago when we were all collectively considering the Commerce Grant. If you remember, there were... In the legislation from 2019 and '20, there were a series of all-of-a-cart actions that were proposed that you would be eligible for the grant, but also then had additional, you know, certain safe harbor protections in those. And then, the second option was this, the Planning Action Grant, the Housing Action Plan, which is ultimately what we pursued, which was different than I remember the recommendation from this joint council committee action. So, something happened after there. And without getting into the details of the politics of that, those were being discussed separately, those code policy changes. And so, a lot of those are already listed in either the actions that could be taken within the comprehensive plan or with the comprehensive plan amendment. So, I'll stop there and curious to get feedback from, obviously, the council, but also any of the commissioners to jump in when appropriate.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. Thank you, guys, for being here and presenting. I guess for me, I feel like so much of this is just barely tooling around the edges. And we are in the middle of a very significant housing crisis. And frankly, waiting five years to do anything substantial is essentially just dooming a whole lot of people to some very expensive rents and housing and not a lot of options in between. And I just feel like we need to be doing a much better job of reforming the system right now while we're thinking about it. I mean, hell, we should have done this 10 years ago, but we are where we are, and so, let's fix it now. And so, I think what we need on the work plan, and it should be the priority above everything else, are near-term housing solutions. Lot size, ADUs, zoning densities, potentially increasing densities, potentially, you know, how increased densities, system from center corridors, transitional zones. I mean, some of this is on your list, but I feel like it's way down in the priority, and I feel like so much of this is going to get footway off. And if it's an issue of staff, I... I mean, again, we're in a housing crisis. Let's prioritize this. It's our mission to get this stuff done. And I would support a lot of... I wouldn't take anything off the table in terms of how we could address that. But I think we can actually accomplish some things, start to get the market, equilibrium in the market here, and really address our housing situation while creating a more vibrant community, creating, you know, opportunities for our businesses to have a customer base and more efficient and effective service, services being provided by the city as well. So, you know, we got to stop allowing people to move to Idaho and commute in and take advantage of our amenities. We need people living here in our community. This is where we want them. So, let's do everything we can to do that.
I agree with Michael. I believe we've got a couple of big opportunities that we could delve into fairly quickly up in the North Town area. We've got two big box stores up there that are soon to be completely empty. And, you know, I don't see us doing anything about that. That's a trend that's going on very heavily in California right now.
I'd like to chime in on that, too, if I may. I really think that centers and corridors is... We've set the table for that. We have seen the planning department choked in terms of staffing. I've discussed this with the mayor and her administration. This is where we're going to be able to come out of this economy. So, the speed... I think we're all on the right track. I think, you know, all those things are important to do. I like the prioritization. Thank you for that. I've talked with staff and some of you on the commission. I think actually putting numbers to what some of these actions could deliver us. Like, let's take North Town, for example. If we were working with the owner of North Town, or maybe we work around the corners of North Town, in increasing housing, we could get hundreds and hundreds of units out of that because it's in the MFTE. We could put maybe some incentive programs in there. I don't know. But that delivers us hundreds and hundreds of units. And so, do we work on this that gives us 20 units, or do we work on this one that gives us 200? I think that'll help us prioritize. So, I think you're definitely on the right track. But maybe we have to do outside... If we can't get staffed up, we have a planning director. We're well over it, except Louis has stepped up, which I'm sure he doesn't like doing jobs. They've been, you know, really cut down in staffing. And I would love to see the council work with the administration to prioritize and tackle North Town. We've got the Five Mile area that's blowing up. We've got huge traffic issues there. We've got apartments coming on. There's a couple more with these nodes. It's a great opportunity. It's not a bad thing. We have lots of things we need to do, but we do need help with the staffing. And I think maybe we need to look at hiring some extra people by contract.
Councilmember Wilkerson, I thought I saw your hand earlier.
Thank you, Council President. Thanks. So, this great group on the Planning Commission, two things. I concur with Councilmember Mum, but I still think it's important that we provide options. So, I want a big bang for the buck, but there has to be other opportunities for people to get into this housing market. So, it really can't be a one-stop shop. But really, from the commission's perspective, from your discussions, where do you think we, as council, could support to make the most significant difference? I'm just calling on your expertise and your leadership.
I think I see your hand. Greg?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to agree with all the council members so far. So, I think we need to have a big bang for the buck. And I think we, you know, as I look at things like ADU reform, where there's already been a lot of pre-work done, the nice thing about that sort of reform is then it puts it on the property owner to actually innovate and give them the opportunity to move up and do things. So, right now, I think, like, the current code just constrains them. And, you know, whether it's the owner occupancy requirements or the parking requirements, you know, there's a number of different scenarios there. And the nice thing is that fits right within the framework of the current comp plan. And so, that, to me, can move forward rapidly. To Councilmember Cathcart's point, I think we need some substantial reform. And unfortunately, I think our current comp plan, at least around land use for in the housing areas, is fairly constraining. It really defines what single-family homes are. And while I certainly value single-family homes, I lived in a single-family home area. I think we need to provide missing-middle opportunities for other... To give that opportunity for growth. for growth. And for that to occur, that's going to require a comp plan change. And I don't think it can wait until the 25, 26 cycle for the major comp plan update. I think it needs to occur prior to that. But that's going to be a really heavy lift. I mean, it's a huge amount of public outreach, huge amount of planning to make it happen. And so what I'm hoping is that council can be on board with a deep review of what it means to have housing in our city. I think right now there's a fear that, well, if we upzone something, we're suddenly going from single family low density to high density. We need to provide the opportunity for middle density. And right now, I don't think our comp plan and our development code effectively allows for it without some substantial constraints. And so I think that's the part that we really need to revisit and that we need to work on. And that could be a one or two year process because it's going to be that comp plan change.
Thank you. So I think I'll step down and speak as an individual commissioner, so I can give my personal professional opinion. So I think there are a couple of things that are big levers here. I think we continue to do all of the surgery, meaning the surgery level, you know, ADU reform, all these things that we have done a lot of background work and are ready to implement. But I think I agree with Greg, and I don't know if this would be a consensus opinion, opening up LU 1.3 and 1.4, single family, multifamily, lets us talk about those, the subject matter of our overall strategy in our comprehensive plan of centers and corridors and where that is successful. And I'm not arguing for, against that. There are areas where, you know, centers and quarters are very important for intense development, especially with commercial office, if we have higher density multifamily. And that's how we plan infrastructure, that's how we plan transit. But I think what has happened in our 1991 selves, 2001 selves, was that became coupled strongly with the way we do the low density residential. And that became exclusively single family. And I think we really need to look closely at that of how we still develop residential with certain densities, certain forms, meaning our floor area ratios, what other controls we have over developing livable neighborhoods and be able to speak about it differently rather than a dated term of single family, which means the relationship of people within dwellings and so forth. There are other ways that cities are looking at this that still preserves the livability, but also allows for greater intensity of development. Because when we really look at how we have the densities within our neighborhoods, we are way under, you know, the densities that are allowed. And we know that just because we can go four to 10 units per acre doesn't mean that we're ready in terms of our infrastructure for 10 units per acre. But when we have neighborhoods that are only, you know, at two or three units per acre, we have to really question whether or not we are both using our infrastructure correctly, but also are we, are we being equitable in the way we are treating both the benefits and the burdens of developing our city? So, and I think there are great models out there, but at least we need to have the big move of saying, of talking about it as a community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other commission members, council members?
I guess I just want to clarify on what you were saying, Todd. The two to three units per acre, we don't even allow those anymore. It's got to be a minimum of four. I'm just wondering if part of that struggle is we've annexed areas that are not urban in nature and then our city is taxed, our citizens are taxed with having to retrofit that into an urbanized level of service. Is that what you're talking about? Because we don't support two to three units per acre.
Correct, correct. I'm referring, and we could actually refer back to you, we did this work in, with the 2016 with, or maybe a little later with the infill maps. Specifically in that infill report, map six through nine, we go through our neighborhoods and that's, those are the best maps we have to talk about realized density. And or we can look at in terms of actual parcel size. And what we see is what we, you know, is not surprising that our South Hill neighborhoods that had certain, you know, have larger parcels, they were zoned single family or had covenants or so forth, right? They're in that two to three realized range and but also have the highest AMIs in the city. So they have the, or perhaps they have the highest opportunity to, you know, subdivide parcels or create, you know, duplexes and triplexes. And that's not saying there's the neighborhood or the political will to do that, but that's, that might be a greater opportunity. And then when we compare that to our displacement maps that we recently produced, we also realize that the lower AMI areas that have been disadvantaged structurally for, you know, decades also are the least, have least opportunity for development. But, you know, that would be arguing for that strategy of spreading out that density across the city while still maintaining our centralized infrastructure, centers and quarters and so forth.
Yeah, so that's where I just want to weigh in a little bit, just to be mindful of, we can't afford to pay for the streets that we currently have in terms of maintenance. We can't afford in a lot of ways to service the 70 square miles that we have with police and fire. So the centers and quarters concept foundationally is driving that density toward where services and infrastructure investments already exist. And so I am a big supporter of building out our centers and quarters. I understand the broad interest to increase and tweak and surgically change the residential single family. But to climate change efforts that we're doing, and, you know, the cost that the city has to bear to service even with garbage, street cleaning, really taking into consideration as your six-year plans are coming forward, investing in the core and investing in the centers and corridors is really, in my mind, the most efficient way to use tax money, tax dollars. So it's tougher to develop in those areas. It takes more time, I think, but ultimately the city benefits. So I'm interested in all of what you've presented, but I'm most interested in finishing these center plans. I think about the Shadle area. I think about what potential the Shadle area has that has been unrealized. Can you imagine taking advantage of Shadle Park and having dense housing around that and people can walk to everything and all the new things that are coming on there? I just get excited about that for our community and our urban city. So I'll step back. But that's where I really hope the city can look at putting its planning effort. Thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart.
I would just say, I think the best way to combat climate change to enable our neighborhoods to be as vibrant and walkable as possible and allow for more, you know, mixed use and neighborhood retail as well. I mean, I think that's the way we can be, you know, more environmentally friendly as a community.
Other.
I wanted to comment on.
Joanne.
I'm very much in favor of centers and corridors too, of course. I mean, that's what we've been aiming for, for how many years now, and it's finally coming to fruition. But we had a discussion yesterday at the planning commission level about, just about Shadle Center and that whole area up there that's north of Wellesley. And some of that housing stock is in great, great, great shape, even though a lot of that housing could probably be updated a lot. But I agree, there's lots of opportunity there and lots of opportunity around North Town. And then one thing that we had to discuss about yesterday too, was the central city line that's going in and the need, really the need to plan for the land use and the higher density around those areas. So anyway, that's my thoughts.
Other commissioner, Greg.
I absolutely believe, I believe in intensification around our centers and quarters. I think that was the intent of it and I definitely support that. At the same time, you know, and I, while I think we can work on intensity there, I think providing a lighter level of intensity growth within the residential single family areas is also a key component. Because for me, that also creates the opportunity for more ownership options. Ideally, you know, in places that are higher intensity, maybe we can get condo reform and so we get more condos built and that creates a home opportunity or an ownership opportunity as well. But we know that that's a state law issue that it's still making developers hesitant to do that. Hopefully that's going to change. But what we can do is if we provide the ability to build some missing middle housing types, whether it's duplexes or triplexes, fourplexes, I mean, there's different options there. Some of them we've already done with like cottage homes, but others we haven't. And they're currently not allowed. And I don't want to see a bunch of new asphalt. I don't want to see expanding infrastructure. Those are long-term costs that the city ultimately has to pay for. And so if we can alleviate that by providing not only intensity around the cores, but also some lighter intensity growth around our residential, you know, our single family residential areas, then to me, that's a win-win. I think it's a two-pronged approach. We work on both of them. I know that's a lot of work, but I don't think we neglect our centers and quarters. I do think there has to be a focus there, but also that focus on residential improvements, residential, single family improvements also needs to be moved forward as well. Thanks.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
I'll be quick, Mary. I like all the growth, but the one component that's really important is homeownership. And how will that growth help get us to homeownership for the stabilizations of some of our neighborhoods and those other pockets of our community?
Great. Go ahead, Mary.
Well, I just keep thinking that we need to take a better look at how the pandemic has already changed things and what is not going to probably go back, even post pandemic, whatever that looks like. There are a lot more people who are doing telecommuting, I think that will stay. There's a lot more people who are getting their groceries delivered to their doorstep. The whole motion centers and quarters, the big ones might still work. I think the smaller ones are going to have a lot harder time having anything that actually works. I know I'm retired, so, and I would have had to go into my job at some point, but I would have done a lot more from home. And I now I get most things online and I'm not alone. So I think all of that has to be looked at because I think the buying is changing, the commuting is changing, and the people who are moving in to Spokane that I know of, not scientific, are people who lived elsewhere where it was more expensive and they can afford a single family home here while telecommuting. So I think all of that has changed and I don't think we've done a good enough job, myself included, of looking at what that portends. So I think that has to all be looked at.
Thanks, Mary. Other folks? Michael Baker.
The Association of Realtors is working on a study right now that we'll have available to you by about the middle of March, addressing where the people are coming from, how many there are, what their financial picture looks like, whether they're going to be renters or buyers. And our whole pitch to Betsy's concern is to bring about homeownership in all the neighborhoods of Spokane.
Thank you. One thing I'll add, just to reiterate, you know, the target of missing middle is often thought of as the ability to create the duplexes, triplexes, you know, fourplexes, sixplexes, row houses, townhomes, stacked, you know, stacked flats, that are the opportunities for, you know, 20 to 30 year olds to come in and start building equity and be near the public assets of parks and schools, you know, so a tighter radius than we would probably see with the larger center and corridor, you know, transit oriented pieces. Or the aging populations that don't want to leave their neighborhoods and want to, you know, be able to downsize and maintain equity in an ADU or one of those other models. So I just want to put that out there to make sure that that gets expressed. Thank you.
Other, oh, Cliff.
One of the issues is that each neighborhood is quite different, so one size fits all.
Great point. Other, Greg.
So I know I've said we need to do everything with housing. Part of that, I think, comes out of, part of it's already on the work plan with the outcomes of the housing action plan. I think that's going to drive some of these items forward. I do think, and this has already been floated, I think, by Lewis, is the idea of a deeper working group on housing policy moving forward. And so that is a joint planning commission, city council effort that can look at some of these issues on a far deeper basis than what we can do here today and really drive some of these, what could make the biggest difference. And, you know, we've kind of done it to a degree with the infill work plan and, but I think it needs to be an ongoing discussion that we can't just have once a quarter for an hour-long meeting. It needs to be an ongoing effort, particularly as we try to solve this housing crisis. What I don't want to see is, I'm tired of new developments popping up in, whether it's the county or Spokane Valley, Liberty Lake, Kootenay County. Right now, I think our policies are pushing a lot of development outside of the center, outside of the city. And, you know, I want to see us flourish. You know, I don't want to see Spokane Valley not flourish, but we have so many wonderful amenities in the city that people can take advantage of if they're able to live here closer in the city. And it can reduce vehicle mile travel and it can be better for our economy overall. So, thanks.
Michael Baker.
One of the concerns our association has is the tremendous number of people that are relocating to Idaho. You know, they don't pay any taxes to the state of Washington, they don't pay any taxes to Spokane County, and they don't pay any taxes to Spokane. But they come over and use our roads, our streets, our infrastructure. And, you know, that's something that is a real, real concern for us. I can't tell you the number of clients I've had over the years that driving an extra 20 minutes to Post Falls is absolutely nothing for someone commuting from Seattle or San Francisco.
Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. Hey, Michael, can you send me that data? Because I haven't seen anything actually substantial that is proving that point. And I, you know, I work a lot on facts and data. So if you can send me information about surveys or studies or any sort of thing like that, because I just, I just don't believe that people are leaving because we have taxes in the city. Most people who live in the city pay taxes and they get amenities for it. And so, you know, I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's actual solid data around that because I haven't, I haven't seen anything that with actual numbers. I'd love to see that if it's true.
Yeah, I will send you the information as soon as we get it in mid-March. I was referring to the people that relocate from out of state or out of area to Post Falls because they have a much more liberal housing program than we do. And they're simply not paying any kind of tax to come over here and work in downtown Spokane.
I'd like to, I could, and I do like, let's all be on the same page about the data. The number one reason usually that people pick where they live besides cost of housing is school districts. And I will put up our Spokane school districts against any Idaho school district. And we really shouldn't fearfully change, I don't think, our code or lower our standards. And so I, we've always heard this, people are running to Idaho, people are running to the valley, people are running to the county. But when you look at our housing prices and the demand for our housing prices within the city of Spokane, they're looking very well, they're looking great. Sure, we have problems, but I want us to make sure we're listening to our neighborhoods. We are listening to the value of people who've already invested in the community, certainly welcoming new people in the community and welcoming our children back to town and helping them find housing. I do think the planning commission is on the right path, but I don't think we need to make radical change based on fear of losing outness. radical change based on fear of losing out necessarily. I think we're kind of a leader in Eastern Washington in terms of quality neighborhoods and what we deliver.
Sorry, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think, the argument is not that people are running to Idaho, it's that they want to live here, but there are so few options available that they're forced to Idaho. So that, this argument's getting put on its head. That's not what's happening. And so it's not about lowering standard, it's about improving our standards. Right now, we have 250, I think, houses available in the entire county for sale. That's not helping you find a good house near a good school district or in a part of town that you want to live in. So it's improving the options, improving access, making homeownership attainable, making rents affordable. I mean, that's what we're talking about here.
As of yesterday, Michael, there were 289 homes in our entire MLS for sale, any price.
Yep. Okay. Todd.
I'll make one more point, just as we're together. You know, we all know we're a planning county within the GMA. We are not like some of the huge sound counties, you know, what are called buildable lands counties, where we are required to come in and model other strategies for densification within our comprehensive plans. But one thing I'll say that comes out of that type of work is even with broad-stroke moves, there's realistic expectation of what would actually happen if you were to, we have a tendency to think literally like if we were to open up some extreme case, all single-family to, you know, fourplexes. The reality is, and this is, this also can be grounded in the work that Minneapolis did, is the reality is there's going to be a 10%, you know, or less, actual diffusion of people, of landowners that would want to do that, are in a position they would need to, or want to go develop. So I think, I think we always need to keep that, that, you know, as we're talking about these levers, what the realization would actually be and not be afraid to take broad strokes or to put caps on things and say we can pilot it up to 50 projects and reassess to make sure that we don't set a precedent or get something in a direction. And that always can be reassuring to, you know, especially neighborhood councils as we talk through, through these types of strategies.
All right, I've been trying to be facilitator and not inject my opinions, but I'm going to in a moment, and then I hope we'll get back to, all right, what does this mean going forward as far as a work plan and things like that? So, but I just wanted to weigh in on the conversation, and my belief is that accessory dwelling units are probably going to be the quickest way to get more housing units in the city that we desperately need. And there need to be some important guardrails because a lot of people fear that phrase, accessory dwelling unit, is going to destroy their neighborhood. So we have to figure that out. We have to come together and come up with a compromise and say, this is how we're going to move forward. And there's, you know, there's all sorts of tweaks on that. And I really, I liked Todd's idea, which I hadn't heard before, which was capping sort of the total number of units in some new experiment like that per year. And so then, even though I agree with Todd that you're probably not going to see a lot of uptake in it, you could formally do that. So that would be great. And I really agree with Greg. The thing I love about the ADU, again, if you make sure that you've got some design standards that work, and you've got some security about some, at least for the first five years of owner occupants doing it, as opposed to people just speculatively buying up houses and turning them into that, is that you're building equity for these average homeowners. And I just think it's such a two-for-win, giving housing and building equity. And I would take it much farther than just creating more space to do it, but I think the city should proactively come up with a program for homeowners that want to do it. Here's the financing package we've modeled, we've negotiated with the banks, you know, here's how we're going to do sewer hookups and things like that, just so that it's really easy, you don't have to be a developer to do it, to live in that, in your property and have a renter there, giving them stable housing. So I think that's there. I also wanted to just weigh in, I think it's not an or, it's an and. And so the centers and corridors totally need, we need to invest our staff planning in that, and I agree with Councilmember Mum, we probably need more people. Council said we would hire more, we want to hire more, we would be happy to hire more if we had any kind of assurance that the jobs would be posted. This is critical to us, and the centers and corridors are there, and the high-performance transit, those are going to unleash, as Councilmember Mum says, hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of potential housing units if we just do the spade work on planning. So I'm looking forward to all that. So I just wanted to weigh in on those. But I guess what I need to know from Lewis or Todd is, all right, how do we translate? Because I know, I know one thing for sure, Councilmember Wilkerson wants the Fifth Avenue Reimagination Project on the work plan. So, you know, how do we do that? And beyond the broad strokes that the commissioners have already identified, how do we, you know, how do we get to the final plan, I guess? What's the process? If someone has some ideas on that? Lewis.
Greg had mentioned, since this is such an easy topic, like we've been discussing for the past hour, maybe setting up a subcommittee of council and Plan Commission to get together and to get into a game plan, a little finer detail, which we can help support here within the next week or two if we'd like to get back together.
Okay. Great. Sounds good. We'll do-
I'd be happy to do that. Me too.
Yep, well, and probably Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I would like to also.
We'll put Councilmember Cathcart on it, then we'll have, I think, the full spectrum of council between the three of you. Yeah. All right, so you got your three council members, Louis. You can get your commission members.
Louis, I would like to volunteer for that.
Yeah.
If I could also add what would be super helpful, and I have talked to staff about this, if they could give us an estimate about what the outcomes would be from the action. So all of these are great ideas, but we have to prioritize based on staff. I'm helping you out here, Louis. If you could say, if we worked on this change, how many potential units or possibilities are there for commercial? So we could say, this could possibly deliver us 500 units, this could deliver us maybe 20 units a year, and that'll help us prioritize to come back as the subcommittee.
Yep. That's great.
And I think that's beneficial, but also it's the amount of lift versus, you know, it's risk or work versus reward. If it's something that's really easy to make happen, even if its yield is lower than something that's a lot more complex, then let's make it happen.
Yeah, timeline, speed.
Yeah. So I certainly would like to participate in that group. You know, I'm a pretty loud, annoying person, so. But also, I think our work plan, I think the work plan needs to occur in parallel with that because I, to me, that idea, that subgroup is really focusing on some housing policy work. You know, so I'd like to see our work plan approved, at least for the next six months on what we're going to do.
And then we could take that to the administration and show the work that we want to do and what the outcomes were, if we need more funding to help with either extra hires or speeding up the hires, or maybe consultant. That would be helpful.
Yep. Tom Sanderson.
Oh, thank you. I'd like to also participate in that subcommittee if I could, maybe give a different perspective to somebody who walks into a lot of homes legally, by the way.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for clarifying that.
I was going from yesterday, so if you could.
Yep. Okay. Well, I, you know, we can only have three council members on at a time. We can supplement with some council staff from other council members. Councilmember Kinnear's not here today, so I know she's your liaison, so she's going to have an interest in it. But we'll leave it to Planning Commission. You all can figure out, your people, we don't, council doesn't need to get in on that. And we also might have some other council staff that are super interested in these issues as well. So we'll let Louis's crew work on that. Todd.
Real quick, Council President, is it possible this can be put in as a proxy on the work plan and so we don't slow down your approval of that? And we just know what the housing component?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's fine. And, and I did, I guess, let me just say, I've lost track of Councilmember Wilkerson, but I know the Fifth Avenue Reimagination Project is her top thing, and it's, so I don't know where that fits. I'm not quite sure what kind of plan that is. Councilmember Mum.
Yeah, we actually talked about that yesterday with Councilmember Wilkerson and planning staff, and a couple of ideas were brought forward, like a targeted investment area, maybe some, some micro-focused business support, infrastructure support. Louis can go into more detail, but we brought up some other types of ideas that may not include the Plan Commission, working with Terry Stripes. Louis, what else did we list? We had some things.
Yeah, like you said, it was a laundry list of, maybe it's not necessarily a subarea plan, but it's more of an action item plan and efforts to help assist the businesses in the area. Might be, includes some infrastructure related to that, so.
It might be a quicker delivery.
Okay. Well, we'll continue. I'll have to check in with her. What about tax increment financing districts? Is that a Planning Commission piece or not? Or is it more of an action? If anyone knows.
Those aren't mandated to go through Plan Commission. We've done updates to Plan Commission on that tool in the past, but that could be a direct item to council.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
And Brian, we did talk about that as well. We need to look into, there was some mention on a state call on Tuesday that cities are only allowed to have three TIFs. Because if you think about the concept, if you have TIFs everywhere, then you don't have any tax dollars going back into the general fund. So I don't know if that's still the case, that we're limited, and there's also a limitation on the number of years. So we may want to understand that. I think we were looking to do a presentation or education at the study session about that.
Yeah, we're definitely going to organize that education, not just for us. I'm hoping we'll do it kind of an evening for the public as well. So we'll, that's definitely going to happen. And I'll talk with you more offline on that. There's some TIF legislation at the state right now, so we might want to hop onto that because I think the TIFs that we have in Spokane don't take away from any state revenue, they just take away from our own city revenue, so it's kind of our choice. But I'll check into that. Greg.
Yeah, since there's a lot of discussion about ADUs come up, and I think there's a fairly broad level of support for including it on the work plan, I'd like to propose that we formally add that to the work plan for moving forward as quickly as we can.
Yeah. Well, this is the, so I totally personally support that, but this is the piece where I'm just a little fuzzy, and my other council members might also be fuzzy. So we kind of have these priorities that have been posted here. I'm not quite sure how we get to the draft work plan. Is staff going to come up with that and then share it with us, and we jostle it around a little bit? Or that, so I'm a little unclear on that, Louis. If you could tell us your thought.
I think we need to work with the subcommittee. I think we can have some placeholders, like Todd said, we can bring forward a work plan to be adopted, and then deep dive further, and if we need to, we can amend the work plan to add more clarity to it.
Okay. That's good. And we should get a work plan as soon as possible with the understanding that we can amend it. So, okay, we're just a little over time, but great conversation. Other comments anyone wants to make, especially if you haven't had a chance to speak yet? All right, so my understanding is we'll have this subcommittee that's not quite constituted yet, and we'll get that solidified, and they'll work, it sounds like, on the work plan as well. That's the proposal. Okay. And then it'll come back to Planning Commission and council for any further adjustments and approval, subject to later amendment as conditions change. All right, well, great conversation. I think, like I said, I think it reflects the conversation in the greater community, so that's great, and it's not going to get solved immediately, but if we can make more progress, everyone will be better off, I think. So thanks for that. And then George, if you're on with folks, we'll transition to your presentation.
Yeah, and I'd invite members of the Plan Commission to stick around if you can, because a lot of what you just talked about is what we're going to present on right now. So we work with the Community Housing and Human Services Department, and a lot of what we do relates around housing and affordable housing for folks 80% or below area median income. So I'm going to share with you a couple of links so that folks are a little more aware of some of the work that we do. So those will be in the chat here shortly. But what I wanted to do is just give you an overview of this project. So this is something that has been in the works for a number of years now. So this is a shared equity housing program. It's been broadly supported throughout City Hall. I know the city council has been involved in some of the discussion about this. And so we have Habitat for Humanity and Community Frameworks, local organizations that would, that really focus on affordable housing. And they have put together a pilot project to help with down payment assistance for qualified low-income homebuyers. And so I'd like to turn some time over to Michelle and Deb, who are here on the phone, to be able to share some of their thoughts, an overview of the project. And then, once they're done, I'll go ahead and give just kind of an overview of where we're at on the status of the contract and timeline from there. So, Michelle, Deb, go ahead.
Awesome. Thank you so much, George, and thank you, Council President Biggs, for allowing us some time today. I know that you are well aware and have sat in on many a meeting with us on our shared equity efforts. But essentially, our goal is to provide a spectrum of shared equity options with the end goal of increasing ownership opportunities for low- to moderate-income homebuyers. The traditional mechanism of homeownership is way out of reach for too many, but it's also kind of a stepping stone opportunity from rentership to ownership, where owners can build some equity, but not full equity, which is what leads us to the shared equity efforts. So much of the projects that we complete are subsidized with private and public dollars that down payment assistance helps provide equitable access to credit. So then individuals and families can have a shot at purchasing their own home and building that equity. There's two major components that we really want to focus on. The first, as George mentioned, is the down payment assistance and deed restriction activity, which not only provides that affordable mortgage, so people aren't paying more than 30% of their income towards housing, but it also generates more of a prominence of affordability for that unit. And then the second phase is really focused on a new and innovative shared equity model called limited equity co-op. We all know that there are significant barriers to the people in our community, and we're seeing even more so that those barriers are reaching even those that are at or just above the poverty line. So these are people that are, you know, have a good-paying job, but they're just outpriced from the market and have barriers like credit issues. So that limited equity co-op model will really help to, I guess, bridge that divide between rentership and the first step towards ownership. Deb, you might want to chime in a little bit on what exactly we could see happening with limited equity co-op. I think you're muted.
Sorry about that. As Michelle said, you know, the main thing that we're trying to solve for is this, you know, this gap between what people can afford and the cost of producing that home. You know, that's the main problem we're trying to solve for. And so the spec- And so, the spectrum of shared equity housing options really, we think, really does help to solve part of that problem. And so, the limited equity co-op would be, if you think of an apartment complex, for example, think of that kind of structure, in a shared equity scenario, the individuals would be buying shares in that building. And it's the entity, it's the co-op entity that gets the financing, not the individuals. So, it really, we think it could really lower barriers for people who, like Michelle said, may have good jobs, may have the ability to pay into something like that, but they can't qualify for a conventional loan that they would get at a bank. And what we will be doing in the first couple of years of our partnership with the city is we will be working with an expert in the field of co-op development, and along with our staff at Community Frameworks, who's very talented in developing housing, and try to find a model that's actually going to work here in Spokane. Co-ops are very popular on the East Coast. That's where they were sort of born in some ways. And so, we think it's a possible model that could really be part of the solution here in Spokane.
So, that first phase will be largely focused on down payment assistance and subsidy with deed restrictions to ensure that long-term affordability. And we hope to complete about 23 units within that first phase, and in tandem, working through the feasibility of what exactly does this community want in terms of a limited equity co-op? Does that look like a new construction building? Does that look like retrofitting a current building? There's a lot of possibilities that I'm personally very excited about, especially in trying to marry the renters in our community and transforming that into ownership.
Thanks, Michelle and Deb. Really appreciate the overview there. So, the next steps that we have are to brief City Council through the Urban Development Committee on this project. So, we'll be doing that on February 8th, and then we'll be going to advance the agenda for the contract on that same day, February 8th. So, Councilmember, or Council President Beggs has already, is showing support on this as the City Council sponsor. So, we'll have more information. We're working with legal right now to get the contract drafted. And so, yeah, more to come on this, but really excited about this partnership. We've had a great partnership with Habitat for Humanity and Community Frameworks in the past, and we're just really excited to be able to take some of these ideas and conversations that you all just recently had and put that out into the community and offer some additional assistance to folks. So, will we have Michelle and Deb? Are there any questions that folks have?
I'm not seeing any, but I did want to just say to council that this project has been in the works for a long time, and it's funded by some money that we set aside when we created the Strategic Initiatives $50 million fund several years ago. This was specifically for land trusts, but it's evolved as we've gotten new tools. But I just wanted to make the connection to 1590 and 1406 money, is that the very models that they're talking about in terms of down payment support with deed restrictions to keep it permanently affordable, and the limited co-op equity where renters can actually build equity that they can then take with them to purchase, those are models that we were thinking about when we were proposing 1590. So, this is kind of, what's great about this is they'll start doing the work and piloting what can work or not, that will then inform our housing advisory committee as they design 1590 and 1406. So, I just wanted to make that connection for people. Okay?
Can I make one last plug?
Yeah.
I think the other really exciting aspect of launching a program like this is that it can fit a variety of the demographics that are seeing the greatest need in our community, especially around senior housing. There's just a, I'm just very excited at the possibilities of seeing this model out and provide assistance to a very diverse variety of our demographics.
Yeah. Great.
And I just want to say, too, that, you know, we really do look at this as a partnership with the city of Spokane and really look forward to that. And I just want to really applaud the leadership of City Council for wanting to pioneer with us in something like this. It says a lot about you as a group, that you really understand the importance of homeownership, not only to those families, but to what it means to the community. And so, we really want to just thank you and applaud you for your willingness to take a chance on this and pioneer something that we think will really be, you know, a good turning point for our community.
Great. All right. Well, thank you both for presenting today, but really, all the work that you and your organizations have invested in this idea, which I think, even though it is pioneering, it's catching wildfire, and, you know, the realtors were super happy to support it as well. So, anytime we can get everybody on the same page, that's the way forward for me. So, all right, that would bring us to the end of study session. We'll see folks on Monday afternoon for the Public Safety Committee, I believe, is our next meeting before our legislative session on Monday. All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a great weekend.